Good evening and welcome to the Buncombe County Board of Education regular meeting for Tuesday, November the sixth, two thousand and twenty five. I will call this meeting to order. If we will all please stand for the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's colors are presented by Inca High School JROTC instructed by Major Kevin Dambauer, U.S. Air Force retired, and Master Sergeant Douglas Draper, U.S. Air Force retired.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, you remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. So, welcome everyone, welcome board members to our board meeting this evening. As a reminder, the mission of Buncombe County Schools is to foster a culture of excellence and continuous improvement where every student will thrive and learn from exceptional educators. Our vision in Buncombe County Schools is that every student will graduate on time, prepared to pursue their chosen path as critical thinkers and collaborative leaders in our diverse society. Before I hand it over to Dr. Jackson this evening, I would like to take a moment, since we are in the month of Thanksgiving, I think it's apropos to give thanks for all of our staff and a couple of them in particular. As I have been visiting PTA and PTO and advisory council meetings over the last few weeks, one concern has been very prevalent in our community, and that is, how can we support our students and families that are facing food insecurity amidst the likely disruption of SNAP benefits? As we know, there is a baseline of food insecurity facing the children across western North Carolina. The statistics show us that one in four children in our region face some form of food insecurity, a problem that all of us deeply care about. Amidst our current disruption of SNAP benefits, the food insecurity is likely to deepen and is a real problem for many of our families in the BCS community. I know that our system is always working with community partners to help stem childhood hunger in our community as we serve thousands of students multiple meals a day for free. Our BCS nutrition department is truly exceptional. Every time I get to eat lunch in one of our schools, I see students greeted by kind and thoughtful staff serving nutritious food to help them learn and reach their full potential every day. I want to first say thank you to all of our BCS nutrition staff across the county for your dedication to our students. Your work in our school buildings is incredibly important, and our Board of Education is very grateful for each of you. That being said, I want to take a moment to especially acknowledge the Director of our school nutrition program, Ms. Lisa Payne, who has led our nutrition department for many years and has contributed so much to our school system during that time. Thinking back over the last several years, we can reflect on how our nutrition department found ways to serve remote meals to students in need during COVID so that they can continue learning with nutritious meals while not physically at the school building. That was a huge task. We saw Mrs. Payne's leadership in the wake of Hurricane Eileen as our schools served as community hubs in multitude of ways, serving as distribution hubs and working to reach students and families remotely that were in need of nutrition. I know that Ms. Payne is leading our nutrition department right now, as we speak, to help meet the nutrition needs of our school community and beyond amidst the current concerns regarding SNAP benefits. And her leadership will literally help thousands of children be healthy and more nourished during this time. So, thank you, Mrs. Payne, for your leadership. On behalf of our board, I just truly want to say thank you for your efforts and leadership for our school system. With that, I will hand it over to our superintendent.
Good evening, parents, members of the community, board members, and teammates. Traditionally, November is the time in our calendar when we pause to acknowledge our blessings and express our gratitude. This year, that pause feels especially important. As we continue to recover and move forward, I remain deeply moved by the extraordinary support our community has shown and by the steadfast dedication of our Buncombe County Schools family. Our teammates have embodied what it means to lead the climb, continuing the work with courage and grace, no matter how steep the path. To every teacher, bus driver, custodian, assistant, child nutrition worker, counselor, administrator, and support staff member, thank you. Thank you for showing up each day with heart and purpose, for loving our students and for ensuring that learning continues even in the face of challenge. Next week, our nation will pause to observe Veterans Day, a moment to honor those who have served in defense of our country. Here in Buncombe County Schools, we are proud to count among our teammates, parents, and community members, many veterans whose lives of service continue to inspire our own. To each of them, we offer our sincere gratitude for their courage, their sacrifice, and enduring example of leadership. We thank them for protecting the freedoms that make our work and our students' dreams possible. Tonight, we have much to celebrate. Out of one hundred fifteen school districts and more than seventeen hundred Title I schools across North Carolina, for the third time in four years, the Department of Public Instruction has again named a Buncombe County School among the top ten distinguished schools for closing the achievement gap between student groups. In two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, William W. Estes Elementary in the Robertson District earned this recognition. In two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, it was Black Mountain Primary in the Owen District. And this year, West Buncombe Elementary from our Irwin District has been named the top school in the state in their category and will represent North Carolina at the national level. This incredible honor speaks to the unwavering commitment of our educators and the power of believing in every single student. I'm incredibly excited that we are seeing state-leading success in closing the achievement gap across our school system from school to school and district to district in this extremely important work. Also tonight, the board will consider the budget for the current school year. The word that best describes this process is unprecedented. While that word has been overused since two thousand and twenty, it remains accurate today. We find ourselves in the midst of a school year with no adopted state budget and no mini budget to address staff pay. Costs continue to rise, yet our staff face a decrease in take-home pay with an upcoming health insurance increase. Add to that uncertainty of the federal government shutdown and the slow pace of FEMA reimbursements for storm-related damages, and it's clear that these are challenging times. And yet, we continue forward, sustained by the strong fiscal stewardship of this board and the wise decisions made in previous years. We're deeply grateful to our Buncombe County Commissioners who continue to prioritize our schools despite their own storm-related challenges. Their partnership allows us to maintain important commitments, like providing free breakfast and lunch to every student, and to keep our schools places of safety, nourishment, and belonging for all children. This month also marks my anniversary as your superintendent. As I continue forward in my fourth school year serving alongside this board, I remain profoundly grateful for the trust you have placed in me and for the privilege of serving this extraordinary community. Together, we remain committed to supporting each and every student in our care. We will continue to teach, lead, and serve, knowing that no matter how steep the climb, we will rise together and we will lead the climb. To our team and to our board members, thank you for all that you do for our students, our families, our teachers, and our staff of the Buncombe County School System. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent Jackson. Board, I actually need to entertain a motion to approve our agenda for the evening before we move forward. So, is there a motion to approve our agenda? Got a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, our agenda is approved. Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Olmer. We have a lot of good news, great news, I'd say, this evening. So, take it away, Mr. Olmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board. Members, Dr. Jackson, and BCS teammates and families. We are going to begin this evening with celebrations for an art student and an art teacher. Dr. Reed is going to help out here. If we could have Lexi McGrath, a student at Valley Springs Middle School, join us with her teacher, Casey Gruen, Principal Amy Roney, and BCS art specialist Jamie Graver and Ms. Churchill, if you'll join us up front as well. Lexi's artwork has been selected to represent all of western North Carolina in the General Assembly Art Exhibition in Raleigh. The piece is called Perfectly Perfect, and while the original is going to be going to the gallery, some of you close to the front might be able to see above Lexi's certificate her original artwork. She and her family, including her school family, are going to get to attend a special artist reception at the legislature at the end of the school year. Congratulations to you, Lexi McGrath. And we're going to hold this group right up here. Lexi, you can stay as we honor your teacher as well because we want to recognize Ms. Gruen. She has been named the middle-level art educator of the year by the North Carolina Art Education Association. This is middle-level art educator of the year for the entire state, an incredible achievement as Ms. Gruen has been recognized by her peers at BCS and across the state of North Carolina as a teacher leader dedicated to making a difference for her students. Ms. Gruen, thank you for inspiring your students and your colleagues. We are so very proud of you and your accomplishments, and we're very happy to celebrate you here Also this evening, we mark a big accomplishment for West Buncombe Elementary School. Representing the school tonight, we've got Principal Brad Johnson, Assistant Principal Lori McCurry, and Teacher Mike Martin. If you will come forward along with BCS Federal Programs Director Jean Anne Yates and Ms. Plemons, come on down to the front here so we can celebrate you. You heard Dr. Jackson mention in his superintendent's comments that West Buncombe Elementary has been selected by the National Elementary and Secondary Education Act Distinguished Schools Program as a top-ten Title I school in the state for its excellence in serving special student populations. The program recognizes schools that receive federal funding for positive educational advances and outstanding student achievement, working to close the achievement gap. And as Dr. Jackson shared, BCS has had three schools reach this accomplishment in the last four years. And again, not only is West Buncombe a top-ten Title I school in the state, it has been selected to represent North Carolina at this year's national conference. Tonight, we celebrate West Buncombe Elementary School. And also, Mr. Johnson, if you'll stay up front, we happen to have Mr. Johnson's children here and his wife here. If we could commemorate the moment with a photo as well, since we've got the family A little something for y'all's family Christmas card. And congratulations again to West Buncombe Elementary. Recently, a second-year teacher got a big surprise in her classroom when she found out she was the BCS Beginning Teacher of the Year. She is here with us this evening so we can all celebrate her. Ms. Megan Van Etten of WD Williams Elementary, if you'll please join us, with Principal Christie Jones, Mr. Cheatham, and BCS Beginning Teacher Program Coordinator Carol O'Connell. Just over a month into her career as a fifth-grade teacher when the hurricane hit, Ms. Van Etten continued serving students and families through her volunteer work in the Swannanoa Valley. When school returned, her students returned to a caring classroom where they were loved and loved learning. Ms. Van Etten, thank you for all you've already accomplished at WD Elementary and BCS. We look forward to so many great things to come. Congratulations to you, our BCS Beginning Teacher of the Year. Next, we honor two Inca High School students who have shown extraordinary commitment and determination. If Shannon Goble and Ryan Luther could please join us, along with Principal Katie Harris and Ms. Lewis. During the summer, these students completed basic training through the Split Option Program for the North Carolina Army National Guard. Once these students complete their senior year, they'll attend their job training. The program tasked participants physically and mentally, and both of them rose to the challenge. We thank these students for their inspiration. We thank them in advance for their service, and we are so proud to celebrate them with the entire BCS family tonight. And also, if y'all, if this group, if you will all stay up, because we've got more celebrations for Inca High School, we'd like to recognize the entire Inca High JROTC program, represented by members of our color guard tonight and their instructors, Master Sergeant Douglas Draper and Major Kevin Denbauer. The United States Air Force honored the program with its Distinguished Unit Award, recognizing personal growth and accomplishments of the cadets, contributions of the instructors as mentors, and the support of the school and local community. The Air Force also named Master Sergeant Douglas Draper and Major Kevin Denbauer as outstanding instructors. So, we congratulate you for your leadership and for shaping your cadets into future leaders. Thank you so much. David Ball, our district athletics specialist, is going to help with these next presentations for some tremendous athletes. Last year, students from BCS high schools represented the school system at the two thousand and twenty-five North Carolina High School Athletic Association Cross Country Championship. We would like to first recognize the TC Robertson Men's Team. If you would come join us with Principal Nathan Allison, Coach Andrew Devine, and Ms. Churchill. The team includes Jack Anderson, Dylan Chong, Ian Eldridge, Isaac LaFever, Hayden Sluter, and Brooks Rozlonsky. Facing an incredible field of competitors, this group was the third-place team in the six-A division. Also, team member Brooks Rozlonsky, Brooks, give a wave so everybody knows who you are, was the fifth-place individual runner in six-A competition. Congratulations to the TC Robertson Men's Cross Country Team. Next this evening, we would like to honor the A.C. Reynolds Women's Cross Country Team. If you could join us, please, along with Principal Ben Alexander, Assistant Principal Steve McCurry and Casey King, coaches Ivy Briggs and Coach David Honie, and Chairman Elliott, please. Senior Captain Jolene Holman is here with June Leese, Audrey Cadeau, Isabella Toothman, Stella Redmond, and Maya Skebo. We are proud to celebrate these athletes who, as a team, finished fourth in six-A competition. Team member June Leese, make sure to give a wave so we know who you are, June, achieved an eighth-place individual finish. So much to celebrate with the Rockettes Ladies Cross Country Team. All right, Mr. Alexander, Mr. McCurry, Ms. King, Mr. Elliott, if you'll stay where you are, we'd like to honor the A.C. Reynolds Men's Cross Country Team as well, if you could join us front and center this evening, please, as a team. As a team, this group achieved first place in six-A competition, making history for the Rockettes Cross Country Program. Team members here with us tonight are Gus Simmons, Alex Rawlings, Julian Caldonado, Charles Cohn, Zach Lawson, Sawyer Hodges, and Eli Card. In addition to the first-place team finish, two athletes received individual top-ten finishes. We congratulate Alex Rawlings, who finished eighth, and Gus Simmons, who finished fourth. So much good news tonight. Next, we would like to bring down the North Buncombe Men's Cross Country Team with Principal Kevin Yance and Coach Jane Roan. Ms. Franklin, if you will join us as well. This team achieved a third-place finish in the state among all the five-A schools. Team members include Michael Ferguson, Jonathan Marsden, Jacob Quade, Carter Van Dyke, Carson Webster, and Milton Nayland, your North Buncombe Men's Cross Country Team. One member of this team, we should say, was the fastest individual competitor. We celebrate the first-place finish of Michael Ferguson, who completely dominated the course with a time of fifteen eighteen. And we should say, if Mr. Ferguson looks familiar, he's been here with us before because this is his fourth state championship title. Congratulations, Blackhawks. Finally, we celebrate another student who was supposed to receive a special piece of hardware at the state cross-country championship. Hold on, there's a story. Craig Webb of Owen High School, if you could please join us with Principal Dawn Rookie, Coach Bob Sattlemeyer, and Mr. Cheatham. Craig finished the course in sixteen minutes and twenty seconds, nearly thirty seconds ahead of his next closest competitor. He finished so fast that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association didn't have time to finish making the trophy, unfortunately. It's somewhere on its way to the Valley, but we look forward to getting a picture of you when they get it to you soon. But congratulations to you on that first-place finish representing Owen High School of the Valley and Buncombe County Schools. Owen High School of the Valley and Buncombe County Schools. And we congratulate all our honorees this evening. Remember, you can always see all the good things happening at buncomeschools.org. Mr. Chairman, that's good news for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ulmer. If we could have all of our good news honorees there. You could follow Brianna and Michael back to the Maple Room. They're going to take a few group photos with you. And while those folks exit, we're going to pause for a brief recess Thank you, and welcome back to our meeting in progress. That was a bunch of great news. Thank you, Mr. Ulmer. We are moving on to the next item on our agenda, the Strategic Plan Highlights. Dr. Jennifer Reed, getting better at getting better. Let's talk about that.
Good evening, Chairman Elliott, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. It is my pleasure to be with you this evening to talk school improvement. School improvement teams at our schools are the primary mechanism for improvement, improvement in culture, academics, and also the overall student experience. The general statute at the state level sets expectations for school improvement teams. A school improvement team, of which there is one at every single school in the state of North Carolina, has specific representatives, according to state law. Of course, the principal, any assistant principals, teachers, and other instructional personnel, teacher assistants, and parents. The job of a school improvement team is to develop a school improvement plan to improve student performance. Specifically, our Board of Education has translated state statute into our own policy. Policy 3430 actually lists several different guidelines that we abide by and further clarifies a lot of the points made in state law. For instance, in Buncombe County Schools, each of our school improvement teams has two parents on each team, and those parents should reflect the racial and socioeconomic composition of the students enrolled in the school. Our high schools also have students on their team, at least two, and again, those students should also reflect the racial and socioeconomic composition of the student body. Board policy goes on to state how important it is for school improvement plans to align with both the State Board of Education mission, vision, and goals, but also the goals that are set forth by you, the Board of Education. When we think about what those goals are in Buncombe County Schools, we think about the Board's strategic plan. Mr. Elliott earlier talked about our mission and vision, which is, which grounds our strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, we also have a set of core values that are so important to our system. We want those values embedded in all of the work that we do. Additionally, and most relevant to what we're talking about tonight, our strategic plan contains four goals. Goal one, around academics. Goal two, around school culture. Goal three, around durable skills. Those are the skills that we want all of our students to have to prepare them for what's next after graduation. And also, goal four, which is around robust teacher and all-encompassing staff support. This year, we have our first official arm, I like to call it, of our strategic plan that is designed to reach down into every single classroom across our school system, and that is our Elevate BCS Instructional Framework. You've seen this before, and as you begin to review school improvement plans throughout our system, I hope what you'll see is evidence of the framework at work and alive in our school improvement plans. This instructional framework has the student learning experience at the center, and we know that that is impacted when teachers intentionally design instruction and form welcoming classroom environments for all students. Back to our board policy, one of the important parts of this policy is that our schools seek assistance from central services personnel, and that we, as central services departments and staff, are always there to provide guidance and support to our schools. Our schools develop a school improvement plan, they review that plan, and they amend that plan. So they meet monthly, and the school improvement plan is not just a document that's done once and it sits on the shelf, it is a living document. So when you see the word amend in this policy, that allows school improvement teams to look and see how they're doing in meeting their goals. What do their performance measures say? Are there new action steps and strategies that they need to weave into their plan throughout the term of the school year, instead of just waiting until the end of a semester or the end of the year to see how they did? So we're going to rewind back to July of 2025. When we think about the support that central services provides our schools, we start that, and we've done this the last four or five years in the summer, where we've asked a small representative group from every school improvement team throughout Buncombe County Schools to come together, and we typically offer three or four half-day sessions where they all come in a room, and we set the tone for the year on school improvement in Buncombe County Schools. So this summer, one of the things we began to introduce was the BCS Instructional Framework. We also centered our schools around the three main components of a school improvement plan, and that is setting goals, where are we going? And they set goals in terms of overall school performance, both growth and proficiency. They also set goals around student group performance, and also around school culture. For every goal, there's a set of performance measures, so schools will know how well they're doing in achieving those goals. How will they measure progress towards the outcome of those goals? And action steps are potentially like the meat, the most important part of the plan, and that is what are they going to do to get there? Schools have multiple data sources. They are data-rich, and sometimes it's a very lengthy process to sort through all the data, to understand it, and to find the data where they can most have places to improve and get better at getting better. Here are quite a few examples of things that they can look at to form their goals. Of course, EOG and EOC scores. You'll also see behavior and attendance data. You will also see survey data, which we collect annually from staff, parents, and students. And then there is a variety of other assessment data that is available throughout the course of the school year, like our M-Class DIBELS data, which is early literacy data. We have an assessment called MAP. MAP measures progress at the beginning, middle, and end of the year in math in grades K through eight. So again, they're able to measure their progress throughout the course of the year. One of the most powerful practices that happened over the summer with school improvement teams was introducing them to our protocol called a root-cause analysis. What that does is it causes schools to look at the data and dig deeper into the cause. So when they come up with action steps and strategies, they're hitting the root of the problem that exists, which will be more likely to cause improvement in that particular area. And so they practice this protocol called the Five Y's, where they ask five Y questions in a row to try to get them to the root of the problem. And I'll show you an example of that in just a minute. But before I do, this slide shouldn't be unfamiliar to you all. It was in our Testing and Accountability presentation from October. I want to talk a little bit more about proficiency and growth, because it's about to come up again. Remember, proficiency in the state of North Carolina is scoring a three, four, or five on an end-of-course or an end-of-grade exam. It's like running a race with a finish line. You either cross the line or you don't. You're either proficient or you're not. Growth, on the other hand, is like running that same race, but there's no finish line. Growth is measured about how far you went from where you started, and in North Carolina, our growth scores are comparison scores. So it compares students and groups of students to other students who started at the same place, and did those, did you make average growth? Did you exceed that average, or did you not quite get there? So hold that thought, and we're going to revisit growth and proficiency again in just a minute. You also may recognize this particular data set from October. I'm going to decode it for you just a little bit, so we all know what we're looking at here. This is kindergarten through third grade M-class literacy data. This particular graph shows data by student group. So you'll see there are clusters of bars. The blue bars are the beginning of the year scores from last school year, so the 24-25 school year. Beside the blue bar is a red bar. The red bar is the end-of-year score for that particular student group. So if you look at the "all" category, which is the cluster of bars on the furthest left, you'll see at the beginning of the year, all students in kindergarten through third grade in Buncombe County Schools started the year with an average of 44% proficient. 44% of students were proficient in literacy at the beginning of the year. At the end of the year, they made 23 points of growth to be 60, to where 67% of students in kindergarten through third grade were considered proficient. Okay? Now, above each cluster of bars, you also see an oval with a plus sign. We celebrated in October that those plus signs were almost the same across student groups, because it showed a similar rate of growth. That's something we can control, is how far we take students from where they started to where they ended. Now, a school improvement team might look at this graph and say, "That's great, but I also see discrepancies among student groups." And that forces me to look at proficiency a little bit. And if I were to apply the Five Y's strategy to this particular set of data, I might start by asking, "Why are there proficiency discrepancies among student groups?" That's kind of a loaded question, and there's a lot of ways the Five Y exercise can go. For the sake of our example tonight, I might say, "Because some students are obviously not meeting grade-level standards." Well, why aren't those students meeting grade-level standards? Well, for some reason, the content must not be accessible to this group of students. Well, why isn't that content accessible? Well, when we dig deeper into the data, it actually shows that our scores indicate a gap in vocabulary knowledge. And so from that series of questions, schools begin to form action steps based on the root of the problem. And so an action step here might be, because we've identified vocabulary, that teachers will now utilize small-group instruction to front-load vocabulary with students before the main lesson is taught. That's actually a research-based strategy. It's really powerful. So when you look at school improvement plans, you'll see action steps that are a result of digging in with a process like that Five Y's, so that they are the most powerful things we can do to cause student growth and improvement. One more quick example. I won't go through the entire process of Y's here. We celebrated last month, and we should celebrate. Our graduation rate is 91.4%, second-highest in school system history. We missed it by one-tenth of a percentage point. There's a lot to celebrate there. But if I'm a school improvement team, I might go, "Well, what about the 8.6%? And what can we do to make sure that 8.6% also graduate with their cohort?" Which certainly directly lines up with our school system vision, mission, and vision. And I won't go through the Five Y process here, but you kind of get the point, that we dig deep down and see what we can do to move the needle. We're getting better at getting better. All right, now we're going to channel back the growth and proficiency conversation. Last month, we also went through this quadrant graph. And the takeaway here is that growth and proficiency are both important. Growth is the measure we do have the most control over, and so consistent growth over time can yield and lead to higher proficiency. What we do want is that growth line, that's the horizontal axis there that's in yellow, we want all of our schools to be above that line. And so where it's circled there in yellow, high growth and low proficiency, and high growth and high proficiency are all okay, as long as we have consistent high growth over time. So we're going to dig down to one school's data. This is actual data from an elementary school in Buncombe County Schools. It is third-grade data for 35 students who have, who are English learners, or multilingual learners, as we call them. And as a group in this school, those 35% students, 14.3% of them are proficient on the end-of-grade reading test in third grade. On the right, you see two purple bars. These bars are from our EVOs system that measures growth across the state. The small bar on the left represents the 35 students, and as a cohort, as a group, they are plus-one growth. That means they met growth as a cohort. On the right, you see a bar for all other third-grade students that are not English learners. And as a cohort, they were plus 5.8, which means they exceeded growth. And so as a school improvement team, if I look at the proficiency and growth side by side, what I'll see is a lower-than-desired proficiency score. I see good growth, but not as good as the rest of that third-grade group. And so as a team, I'm going to come up with some goal and some strategies around those numbers. So if I were to plot that particular data set on that quadrant graph, you can see it's above the growth line just a little, but the proficiency is low, and that's where it would fall. So this school, which is, this is the data for this actual school's school improvement plan, which I have not named this evening, but it's one you'll be reviewing as a board. Their goal, because of this data, is that their school will increase proficiency and foundational reading skills for multilingual learners. And that's on the left. This particular table looks very much like the school improvement plans at a glance that each of you have to review over the next month. Their performance measure, they're actually looking at their M-Class DIBELS literacy data to measure growth across the course of the year. The indicators, which we've not talked about much, are housed in the NC Star platform. So our schools start their plans in NC Star, but they've also created that school improvement plan at a glance. For you all to get an easier view of what that looks like, the indicators are research-based strategies for improved outcomes. And a lot of our schools will use those research-based strategies to develop their action steps. And so when you look at the action steps at this school, you'll see quite a few different things that they're focused on, setting goals, using grading rubrics, working within their grade-level professional learning communities to analyze data, specific to ML students. This particular school is very focused on GLAD professional development, which is an amazing model for teaching that's centered around language acquisition. It's amazing for multilingual learners, but it's good for every single student. That's the, that's the beauty of when we find strategies like this that work for one group, they're going to work for all groups of students. And then at the very bottom, one of the action steps is also centered around ESL families and stronger family connections. So you can kind of see where the core beliefs and our goals and our strategic plan really align in this school improvement plan. For sake of example, this is one of our middle school plans. This particular goal is around student growth and proficiency and core instruction. So you can see how in their achievement goal, they have actually embedded growth and achievement. And then some of their action steps that I want to call out here are that they have an academic... an academic interventionist. That's not something we've been able to provide every year, but because of a lot of our grant funding, we've been able to do that for some of our schools. Instructional coaching, looking at that map and check-in data, using grade-level tasks and scaffolds, which comes right out of our Buckham County schools framework, and then also collaborating with United Way. And for high schools, you'll see a similar goal here around planning effectiveness of meaningful and engaging classroom instruction, which targets and supports all student groups. But this school has specifically identified EDS, which is economically disadvantaged, EC, and their ML population. Their action steps range from targeted professional development to, at the very bottom, their administrator team meets weekly to discuss trends and instructional practices, which is also a very powerful practice. It takes everyone in a school to have the most impactful student, school improvement and student improvement. So we're getting better and getting better. Every year, we try new strategies. We align with research-based best practices. This year, we're so proud to have been able to leverage some additional grant funding, and you can see some of the sources there that we don't have every year. And we are thankful for the federal funds that we receive through Title I, Title II, and Title III. They're all put to good work, supporting our schools to achieve their goals and their school improvement plans. That really is a way we've been able to invest for equity and excellence in our school As a school system, these are just a few pictures of some of the things that have happened since the beginning of the school year. One I want to point out to you, top, second from the left, where it says building internal capacity for MLs, the GLAD training I mentioned. Those are two of our ML coaches, Chanina Tovar and Carrie Gregory, who are actually training to be GLAD trainers for our school system. So we're developing their capacity to lead GLAD training throughout our entire school system. And we have quite a few schools who are having all of their teachers trained in these strategies, and they're so impactful. In fact, Johnston Elementary is one that has recently had every single one of their teachers trained. SD's Elementary is doing the same, and we have other schools coming on board, and we'll better be able to afford our schools to do that because we have trained coaches in our school system. And then on the bottom right, you'll, you may remember from our October data presentation that fifth grade is an area of focus for us. And that's a picture of Kate Whittier. She is our K through 12 science specialist. She was able to leverage some Title II funds to bring teachers in from fifth grade just this past week to offer professional development for them as well. And then in the top right, we continue to elevate student, staff, parent, and community voices through our advisory councils to continually inform our work. As a board, you have two ways to access school improvement plans. You can access those plans through the NC Star platform. That's available on every school's website by going to our school and selecting the school improvement team. And there is a link, not only for the board, but for anyone in the public who would like to view all of our school improvement plans, to access those online. On the left-hand side, you can see that our schools have done a wonderful job, kind of simplifying and picking out the most important pieces of their school improvement plan in the at-a-glance form, which I also was able to share with you all in the board update on Sunday, and have given you all some hard copies as well this evening, so you can review those for approval next month. And so next steps would be board reviewing those plans. And we also have a public feedback window open for schools that have low-performing designations. And so if anyone in the public would like to give feedback on the school improvement plan for those schools, you can go to their website, and there's a Google form there that will provide feedback, and we'll go to every school's principal. On December 11th, we'll be asking for the board to consider approval of all school plans this year. And then on December 12th, all of our schools that do have the low-performing designations actually have to formally submit their plan to the Department of Public Instruction, and DPI will be giving feedback to those schools throughout the course of the school year. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Reed. That was incredibly informative. Board, I'll ask, if you have any questions for Dr. Reed? Yes, Ms. Churchill?
Dr. Reed, I think mostly I'm just kind of wondering if you could maybe point out again that you had the one slide that talked about where we were getting some of the extra funds, like some grants, and also there was a lot of title funds in there, which are federal funds, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So is there a plan in place if there is a loss of those funds? Have we looked at any kind of contingency plans? Have we spoken to anybody at the state? I mean, I'd hate to see, you know, the momentum, you know, get, get lost because we don't have the federal dollars.
Yes, that's a great question, and, and we are heavily dependent on that funding to supplement what we're able to do with our state and local funds. While we hope that we receive the same or more in each of those titles, we really don't know anything, and typically that can happen later on in the school year. So we would be talking to the board, of course, and getting your direction on what we would need to do if those funds were to not come in at the level that, that we hope that they will. And that could be part of just budget, ongoing budget conversations with the board. Dr. Jackson, do you want to say anything about that?
Thank you, Dr. Reed, and thank you so much for that question, Mr. Churchill. It's certainly something that's keeping us all awake as we understand how dependent we are on those federal funds and the support that we receive from the United States Department of Education. One of the things that I'm very proud of is we saw more grant funds this year than we've typically had. Our team is proactively seeking grants to support our work so that we can move away from being so dependent on those federal funds. I don't know that there's enough philanthropy in the world to replace those federal funds for our school system, but we are as active as we possibly can be in seeking additional funds. Additionally, we're working, the School Superintendent's Association is working closely with DPI to advocate. Our state superintendent, Mo Green, is in conversations along with the other state superintendents or chief school officers across the country to advocate and to help tell the story of how important those funds are to support the work of our public school systems across the country. Thank you for asking that question. Certainly, we invite all to help advocate for federal funding to continue for our public schools.
Any other questions from the board?
Chairman Elliott, not a question, but a statement. With the loss of Title I funds that we had last year, that, would you agree that really impacted us in terms of being able to pull so many of those small groups of kids out, you know, from a reading and, and help with literacy? That's a big concern of mine, that we've lost some of those folks. And I remember Title I was really important to one of my kids, and so that is a concern of mine. Would you agree that that's probably a...
We heavily depend on Title I, so any loss of funding would be impactful because the majority of our Title I funds go to personnel.
Right.
Personnel cost increase from year to year, so even if we maintain the same level of funding, it might not go as far, right? So we do depend on an increase in that funding to match the increases that we have in our salaries year to year as well. And I do believe that that's a huge part of our success in our school system by funneling that money into elementary schools for the purpose of literacy.
It's important funding.
It is.
Any other questions from the board? I just have one last question, Dr. Reed, sorry. Just, can you, just to refresh my understanding of how we work through this throughout the year. And one, I always want to say thanks to all the staff and the parents that participate and the students that participate in this process. It's a, it's significant time commitment across our county from, from folks participating in this process. And so once they develop action items and then the board approves the plan, how, how do we, I guess, monitor the progress on those action items throughout the year?
Sure, that's, that's a great question. So our school improvement teams meet at least monthly, and the job of the school improvement team is to measure and monitor progress on all of their goals. That is their main job. And so that work really happens at the school level, directed by the principal and the school improvement team as a whole.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Do those, like, so when you monitor those things at the school level across time, so you've got the, the school improvement plans posted on the webpage of the school. So like during the middle of the year, at the end of the year, are those school improvement plans updated with that monitoring sort of progress?
So in NC Star, the way they allow us to enter actions is incrementally over the course of the year. And so there is a date associated with every action, and the school improvement team monthly goes in and sees where they are and if they've accomplished those by the timeframe that they set. They could even shift and move things throughout the course of the school year as well. You know, a lot of the action steps are process actions, right? And so it's building processes throughout the course of the school year, and so those can be pretty easily checked off. Now, the data progress would be something they would only measure every so often, depending on when the data comes in. And a lot of times, that's the middle of the year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on our board agenda is public comment. Dean Chatley, our attorney, if you read our instructions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. It's now time for public comment. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up, and all speakers will have precisely three minutes to speak. There is a timer on the dais next to Mr. Cheatham. When the light turns yellow, you have 30 seconds left, and when it turns red, your time is up. We do ask speakers to adhere to the guidelines that are set forth in Buckham County Schools' Policy 2310. We also ask that you refrain from profane or lewd language, making threats, or discussing confidential student or staff information. We ask that you address the board as a whole and note that while the board is listening and taking notes, the board generally does not respond directly to public comment during the meeting. I'll turn it over to Mr. Reeves.
Mr. Chair, there are nine public comments tonight. First speaker is Craig White.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Jackson, I'm Craig White from the Campaign for Southern Equality. Working across the southeast, I sometimes see trends and patterns. And one of the trends that I see right now is that we are facing a religious nationalist takeover of America's public schools. Now, I know that sounds alarmist. It sounds like a conspiracy theory, so I urge you to fact-check me. The plan is written down in the Heritage Foundation's Project 2025, or you can simply Google what is happening in Oklahoma right now. I've often been here talking about book bans and censorship. That's one of the pieces of this. Legislation that targets LGBTQ people in the schools, that is as well. Erasing LGBTQ people from the libraries, forcing teachers to out their transgender students, bullying of Muslim and Jewish students and staff, harassing queer and trans teachers right out of the profession, all of that. While at the same time dismantling the Department of Education so that there is no federal authority or Office of Civil Rights to provide checks and balances. While at the same time slashing school budgets so that public schools can barely function. And meanwhile, spending millions of dollars of church donations on public school missionary programs that come in with pizza and ice cream and games and books and caring adults, all of the things that the schools find it difficult to afford. That's what's happening, and it is happening here. Now, maybe like me, you think it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if some of our students had a little more exposure to some religious teachings. But underneath the facade of Christianity, this is the Church of Empire. These are the money changers in the temple. This is faith as a tool for building wealth and power. It's the exact opposite of what Jesus taught. And many churches know this. Here's a quote, "Church and state should be separate. The church should not resort to civil power to carry on its work. The gospel of Christ contemplates spiritual means alone for the pursuit of its ends. A free church in a free state is the Christian ideal." That's not the Presbyterians. That's not the UCC. That's not AME. That's the Southern Baptist Convention, the Baptist Faith and Message 2000, because they see the pattern. They know, or they used to know, that religious nationalism destroys the religion as well as the nation. So we need to fight for our public schools, for our country, and for our faith. Thank you. Thank you.
Diane Finn.
Do you need my name and address? Okay, Diane Finn, 446 Liberty Road, Kandler. And I'm speaking on the same topic. Last Saturday, I was at a public lecture held at the Asheville Unitarian Church, and I learned about the LifeWise program that is petitioning North Carolina schools to allow religious instruction off-site during the school day. I was so outraged by this that I made the decision to offer public comment at this meeting. The principle of the separation of church and state is so foundational to the US that it was put in the First Amendment to the Constitution. The Establishment Clause of the First Amendment states that "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." This clause pertains to all levels of government. LifeWise may claim that they are not imposing their religion, but they are clearly part of the Christian nationalist movement, which explicitly asserts against all historical evidence that the US was founded purposely to be a Christian nation and is such should base its laws on the Christian Bible. As someone who was born and raised Jewish and who, as an adult, aligns with the Unitarian Universalists, I strongly oppose LifeWise's effort to use the state in its function as public educator to further its attempts to privilege one religion over another. Make no mistake, LifeWise's ultimate mission is to turn the US into a Christian nationalist state. And let's just think of the precedent this acceptance of LifeWise program would set. Just imagine the response if a Jewish or Muslim organization wanted to take children out of school during the school day to teach children the Talmud or the Quran. It's a slippery slope if one religion gets this program, but then others do not. We have long recognized parents' right to educate their children in their own belief system, or not to teach any religious beliefs at all, but that is done on their own time out of school. I myself raised my own, now adult, children in the UU faith on Sundays, in Sunday school. We must be skeptical about this LifeWise program that seeks to impinge on the separation of church and state by using public school time for their religious education. I beg you to defeat any proposal of LifeWise Academy to take children out of school during the school day. It's a clear breach of the Constitution.
Kristi Korn.
Hi, my name is Kristi Korn. I'm a fifth-grade teacher in the Robertson District. And this is my 16th year teaching, and in those 16 years, 14 of them, I have taught students with disabilities. I have taught kids with, that if you say EC is exceptional children. I've had kids in my classroom for 14 of those years, and it is a big passion of mine, and I've done a lot of research and a lot of things to try and help those students, being a regular ed teacher. And so I'm here today to speak on behalf of the EC teachers because being a, being a regular ed teacher, I can see my kids that come to me, go to their special ed classrooms, and I see what it's like in there. And I hear from my colleagues that they're understaffed. It's very obvious. We have kids with IEPs that have needs that are much greater than the staffing that we were given initially. And that's why I'm here, because our EC students deserve better. They deserve consistency. They deserve people to be in the building every day, not have to learn a new face, not have to learn new names every single year. We have schools that are based, or that are, we have classrooms that go up in grades with these students. And one of my personal students that I've taught since second grade... taught since second grade, he has had a different teacher, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and now fifth grade, and now sixth grade. That's seven years he's been in school with seven different teachers, extreme disability. And the progress that I'm really, that he's made is huge. However, it could be better. Because right now, we all know that the federal funding is the big problem. But Buncombe County should take initiative to be one of the counties that gets ahead of it, especially with our EC department. Because right now, I'm worried that a lot of those teachers are going to begin quitting just because of, we're understaffed, and we don't have what we need. Something Buncombe County could do is looking at our EC assistants. Our EC assistants are only seven hours. All other assistants in elementary are eight hours. I wouldn't want to do a job that was seven hours when I could do one next door that's eight hours. We need to make this something so these kids can have the kind of education that the kids in the regular ed classroom are getting. Because right now, we're not helping them to the best of our ability. And another thing we could do, I know we can look into the budget, and it's something that's ongoing, maybe we could incentivize the position because our kids deserve better.
Thank you.
Elizabeth McDavid.
My name is Elizabeth McDavid. I live in Oakley. My public school is the Oakley Elementary School, and everybody in our neighborhood, we love it. But I'm here to, as a couple of my colleagues have already talked about, to come out strongly against LifeWise. It's a program for religious indoctrination in public schools, which seems like, you know, it doesn't go together. I, myself, I believe that public schools should be honest, accurate, equitable, so that, with equitable access and not discriminate. They should be safe. They should be fully funded, and they should be public. They should not be religious, and they should not promote or allow any religious influence in those schools. For example, this LifeWise program is, you know, basically a stealth campaign that will be coming to you, if they haven't already, to ask you to enable them to indoctrinate our kids to right-wing and Christian nationalist talking points and beliefs. So I'm strongly against that. This program, LifeWise, if enacted, and as it's enacted in other places, it makes kids miss valuable school time because it takes them out of their school. It hinders academic progress, and like we have seen from the presentation, we don't have any time to take kids out of school to go do some religious program. They need to be learning. They need to be learning math, and English, and history, civics, et cetera. But also, you know, there's so much liability. There's so many huge liability issues that you don't even need to think about, you know, like buses and accidents, and standards, and who's responsible, and permission slips, and all this stuff. And then what happens to the kids that don't go? Anyway, I just wanted to give you my opinion on that. Any religious program that comes to you asking for access to Buncombe County public schools should be soundly rejected. Public schools should, as the first speaker said, public schools and religious indoctrination should be separate. They do not go together. Keep the public schools focused on academics and inclusivity, and leave religious education to religious institutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Broussard.
Sharon Broussard, Reynolds District. You've heard me before. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, and board members. LifeWise Academy, as you now know, and its Bible-based teachings, is seeking entry into Buncombe County schools and will cause a lot of problems if approved. LifeWise Academy has declared its goal to reach every unchurched child in every public school. They use public schools to recruit and indoctrinate schoolchildren with a fundamentalist version of Christianity. They seek to disrupt secular public education and impose their Christian nationalism principles, prioritizing religion over public education. Public schools are supposed to be a safe, welcoming place for all kids, not a recruiting ground for LifeWise Academy or others pushing one specific religious belief on them. Dividing public school classrooms among, along religious lines can lead to alienation and bullying. Students who are not part of the majority religion may not have a program that fits their beliefs at all. Nothing is being done for Jewish, Muslim, Buddhist-speaking students, and no kid wants to feel left out. So students often feel pressure from classmates, teachers, or school leaders to go to religious classes. Opting out hurts learning and belonging. Release time programs like LifeWise encourage students to pressure their peers into attending with promises of candy, pizza, and other rewards. Students who don't go will frequently miss real learning opportunities and may be given busy work or nothing to do instead. There is plenty of time before or after school and on weekends for families to send their kids to religious activities they choose without impacting or pressuring others. Public schools are not a pulpit. Separation of church and state protects both. Protect Buncombe County schools by clearly preserving the separation of church and state. Remember, public schools are supposed to be a safe, welcoming place for all our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Angela Levine.
But that's okay. Hi, I live in Black Mountain, and unfortunately, I'm going to have to run after this, so apologies for not being able to stay for the whole meeting. But I wanted to come, and I am speaking on LifeWise as well, the organization I work for, a nonprofit, we've encountered it in Ohio, so I have some firsthand knowledge about this program. Studies indicate that students participating in release time religious instruction, like LifeWise, often miss valuable class time, particularly in the core subjects that we are working so hard to get them caught up on right now. And of course, this loss of class time can hinder academic progress and achievement. Public schools, in my opinion, should be inclusive places that provide, focus on providing core education to all students. And from what I know, talking to teachers, teachers need every bit of that classroom time that they can get with their students to make sure they get educated. Programs like LifeWise can also, as is mentioned by other folks, inadvertently create divisions among students, leading to these feelings of exclusion among the children who don't participate. Children have been bullied in schools for not participating. And then second graders have been forced into study halls if they opt out of the program because the teachers can't be teaching partial classes. I think we can all agree that we are better than this. Additionally, the expansion of such programs has really raised concerns about the safety and liability of moving groups of students off-campus. In Ohio, some districts have rescinded their participation in LifeWise due to these concerns. And there are documented bus accidents, as well as many vehicle violations coming out of LifeWise bus inspections. The bottom line is that all of this opens up, opens the school district up to lawsuits. And finally, while North Carolina hasn't passed legislation yet to allow this release time to happen, the legislators in charge have intimated they will, and they have a piece of legislation sitting in committee right now that would do this. I urge the board to proactively consider the negative impacts of LifeWise or any other religious program on our students' safety, education, and well-being now, so we can get ahead of this. Let's keep our schools focused on academic excellence and inclusivity, and leave the religious education to the religious institutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Natalie Dorsey.
Good evening. I'm Natalie Dorsey. I have two kids in the Inca District. I want to speak tonight about the process of cataloging books in classroom libraries. Since schools need to have their lists compiled by winter break, I am here to say that I am willing to help, and I am willing to coordinate other volunteers to help across the county. Teachers are already overworked and underpaid, and I hate to think of cataloging books as getting added to their to-do list. I have just started organizing the leaders of the PTO and PTAs across the county to help better support the district as a whole, and I would love to tag in these very competent leaders to help at our, help out in our school communities. Also, moving forward, I would like for you, as a school system, to be ready to support teachers and their libraries. Representation of all people matters. Kids need to see mirrors of themselves in their families and their classroom, and they need to see a window to other cultures' beliefs, abilities, gender expression, and types of families other than their own. On the BCS website, there's a link that says, "Why Public Schools," with a list from 1 to 10 of what makes public schools great. Number one, let me say that again, number one, is diverse and inclusive environment. Your child will be exposed to a wide range of perspectives and backgrounds, preparing them to engage with a more globally-connected world. I agree. Public schools are stronger because of their diversity and ability to welcome all. At the last school board meeting, at the parent advisory council meeting that I attended at Inca High, and again tonight by Dr. Reed, an instructional framework to elevate Buncombe County schools was presented. Like you saw tonight, there are three circles. The largest of these circles is a welcoming classroom environment. Classroom libraries that represent every kid in a classroom is a huge step toward a welcoming classroom. This same graphic says at the bottom, "Every student leads. Every teacher inspires." My gender non-conforming child is leading already and has spoken to the board twice, once to ask for more diverse books through Epic, and another time to ask for more queer, safe spaces in our schools. When the students lead, let's also listen. And let's allow teachers to continue to inspire through their classroom libraries. In closing, please tag me in to help teachers catalog books. You can email me at natalydorsey@gmail.com, and let's support our teachers and help them continue to inspire all students. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sarah Wilcox.
Good evening. My name is Reverend Sarah Wilcox. I am a parent of an ACR high school student, and I'm grateful to bear witness to the value of public education in so many ways, communities that care and see the needs of many, and a deep and wide belief in the power of belonging in this county. At the same time, we see forces at the national, state, and local level lean into tribalism and justify their drawing boundaries where the most vulnerable are often left out. This is especially problematic to watch people do as they claim the faith named for Jesus the Christ, who never met a stranger or outcast he didn't welcome in. The Minnesota Department of Public Health believes the tasks of adolescents are best described by the being, belonging, and becoming. Being allows us to define a clear sense of identity, a positive sense of self-worth, and control over our lives. Belonging recognizes a young person's fit with their environment and emphasizes the importance of forming healthy relationships with others, using available systems, and finding a valued place in their world. Becoming includes mastering social skills, developing a sense of curiosity and exploration, seeing a promising future with real opportunities, and having the skills to make it happen, and establishing a respect for diversity. These are powerful markers for what we should hope for our kids and our youth in our public schools. They are ground for the abundant life that God hopes for us all. We don't need LifeWise in our schools. We have plenty of compassion, honesty, and sacrifice. Behold, our teachers. In early September, Education, North Carolina, celebrated the school counselor, Katie McCracken, at Fairview Elementary for her work of bringing the power of belonging to her students. As a parent of an ACR high school student, I know the counselors and the staff working there explored belonging in their environment and were intentional to follow up when youth were disconnected and untethered. I watched heroes rise up in our schools post-Talene. Now I'm watching parents, staff, and board members lament the current snap realities and seek solutions, expressing concerns about how to get it into the hands of kids without creating embarrassment for students. I've seen parents and staff be sensitive to the mental health needs of our kids and their developing selves. It's hard to believe that the people seek, that any people seek a world where others don't belong, but let me celebrate a community and a school system that knows that's power, even in its strategic planning. Edwin Markham, a poet who wrote at the turn of the 20th century, wrote the poem "Outwitted." He drew a circle that shut me out, heretic rebel a thing to flout. But love and I had the wit to win. We drew a circle until come in. Thank you for being a school system that knows the power of belonging. May we continue to draw the circle wide and bring people in. Our students deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emma Lathrop.
Good evening. My name is Emma Lathrop, and I am here to request an adjustment to my bus route to allow me more time for sleep. My bus picks me up at approximately 5:42 a.m., requiring me to wake up at 4:47 a.m. every morning. The current route includes driving for 70 minutes on my first bus, having me wait for an hour at TC Roberson, and then being driven on the Nesbit bus to Nesbit Discovery Academy. This is a total commute time of approximately 2 hours and 51 minutes. By the time I get to school, I am completely drained of energy. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention states that better sleep greatly improves attention, memory, mood, getting sick less often, and reducing stress. Dr. Caitlin Berry, Ph.D., published a study in the Journal of Adolescent Health 2021, stating teens who sleep in later on school days experience less daytime sleepiness. There's a reasonable alternative to my busing situation that will allow me more sleep. I calculated that the Nesbit bus can pick me up and be back on its original route in less than three minutes as the bus passes directly by Biltmore Park Town Square where I live. This would allow me to get at least two more hours of sleep, which would greatly improve my ability to concentrate and learn in school. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Next board on our agenda is the action agenda, and we have the 2025-2026 budget adoption. I believe our CFO, Tina Thorp, is here. There is another presentation tonight about our budget. I, again, need to applaud the Finance Department on your ability to communicate really, really well in printed material, because this book is really amazing. It is a fantastic summary of the key moving parts of the budget. And I have a hunch you may have designed this thing, but...
No, we had some help from the Communication Department for the front of it, and then our budget team put together a new layout. And we're also working on the actual budget book that we have not been able to bring to you yet, that has all the details in it, and it's got a new flair to it as well. But thank you.
Yes, it's really, really helpful, especially just as a board member, I'll say, you know, bouncing around a day job, my own family, and those things, and then trying to sit down and wrestle with really complicated issue like school funding. Just having this presented this clearly is so incredibly helpful. So thank you for the effort that you put into doing that on our behalf. So thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
So in Dr. Jackson's opening statement tonight on the board meeting, he mentioned that this budget was unprecedented, and that we use that word a lot. In the summary that's available online and in your narrative, you kind of speak to some of the unprecedented nature of this budget, but I was hoping maybe you could speak to some of the specific key components about that are going on that make this such a unique budget this year.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by saying this is the beginning budget resolution for fiscal year 25-26, and as you may remember, we brought to you a continuation budget at the end of June, and that allows us to stay in operation till November 30th. And at that time, I said, I'm so hopeful that we will have a state budget before November, and we could bring you a true budget before then. Well, here we are, November the 6th, and we still do not have a state budget, and that has never occurred. November 18th was the latest state budget that we had received, and so we are working through a budget without a state budget, and they have legislation in place right now at the General Assembly that allows us to continue in North Carolina on a continuation budget from the previous adopted budget at the state level. So what they did is they are moving through with a continuation budget from what was approved last fiscal year. Then they have adopted one mini bill, House Bill 125, that gave us the new retirement rates for matching and also the hospitalization rates for matching. That's the employer side that we have to pay on all employees that have, everybody that qualifies for retirement and the health insurance. They also approved a step increase based on years of service, and then there were some technical adjustments in there at the state level for other school systems if they had growth. But in this budget, we have been able to receive our allotments from the state based on the old budget. So what's included in here are state allotments that have been given out, federal allotments that have been given out, based on, there is some carryover that was approved and is in our budget from federal, and our federal allotments are approved for this fiscal year. In that, there's also local funds that, if you will recall, they are using, the local government, county commissioners voted and approved last month in October, they're using 3.9 million of our Article 39 funds for operations to help us meet the needs and continue supporting our students. So that's part of our local current appropriation so that we could get to the same neutral budget that they had approved fiscal year 25. So we are at the same rate from the local government that we had been approved for for fiscal year 25. So that's in here. So what that boils down to is we have our state allotments based on a previous budget, our federal allotments, and then a local based on the previous allotment matching. So in all, what that means is, based on all the expenses that we're going to have through the projections, we're using 4.5 million of our fund balance to balance this budget through the end of the fiscal year, June 26.
Okay. Thank you for that. So just restate that last part. So in order to balance this budget this year based off of a continuation of the understood federal allotments, previous year's state, and the local funding that includes 3.9 million dollars out of Article 39 to be used in operations. Beyond those funds, we have to use 4.5 million dollars out of our fund balance, or, sorry?
Yes, out of our fund balance. That's correct.
Fund balance, to balance our budget this year.
That's correct. And that means that there's, there is no state increases for salaries, anything included in this budget at 4.5. We have to use local fund balance in order to balance the budget.
And so right now, sorry, Board, I'll pass off the questions here to you in one second, but just to make sure, the use of 4.5 million dollars of our fund balance, we're still currently okay in our fund balance from a, well?
Yes.
Okay, fiscal perspective. And then just to speak to your potential risk that you have listed in here, if the state were to reconvene and approve salary increases mid-year or something, what would that do to us?
That would cause us to, first, I would come back to the board with the numbers of what it means. I would have to see how much state allotment comes in to cover those increases, because typically when an increase comes in from the state, they don't align and match perfectly to cover everything. And then don't forget, we have around 600-plus locally paid staff. So what that means is, I would come back with our numbers to the board and give you an update, and there's options of using more fund balance, which would get us into a more dangerous situation physically. And then also from a standpoint, we may end up having to go back to the county locally to ask for additional funding to cover anything that the state did not cover or the federal did not cover.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board, open it up to the board for questions or comments.
I have a...
Yes, Ms. George.
It might be more of a comment, but, and I guess maybe more too, just for the public. As a school board entity, we don't have the ability to collect revenue, and so we are very limited in where we get our money to balance these budgets. And if you think of it, the fund balance is essentially a savings account. And so as that continues to dwindle, we then have to try to rely on other entities who may also be feeling the pinch of, you know, how the economy is going and, you know, hurricanes and all the things. But I think at the end of the day, the difference is for our school system, we are, our hands are tied. We're expected to educate children and be one of the top school systems, which we are very proud of that. But we are asked to do that without having any ability to, you know, maintain a reasonable budget, which, without dipping into our piggy bank, to, like you had said, what could possibly be a dangerously low level. So I think maybe my comment was just more to the public to understand that it's very important to go to the people that do have the ability to raise funds or release funds when it comes to the state and federal to help out their schools.
Very well said.
And I'd like to echo Amy's comments because, you know, I mentioned a minute ago about Title I funds. That's federal funds that comes from the Fed, obviously, federal government, and we don't have control over that. And when you think about at the state level not having a budget, to me, that's an issue. So I don't want to say that we don't have anything to do with any of it, but my point is, you know, we go to the county commissioners for local funding, and like Dr. Jackson said earlier, our county commissioners, I do believe, supports Buncombe County schools and Asheville City schools, and they've done a nice job. I still give them a little bit of a hard time because I do know them, but I know that they're in a critical situation. When I, when I look at, and Amy said it really well, so much of this is out of our control. But what's in our control as citizens is to get out and vote, and I know y'all have heard me say that before, but I got to tell you something. If, we've got to get people in the chairs to make decisions that appreciate and love public schools and love kids, and I'm going to say that to the day I die. If you don't love public schools and don't appreciate what our people do, just call me up. I'll take you to any school any day, and you can see how hard these folks work. When I also look at transfers to charter schools, $12 million, is that right?
That is the amount for this year.
For this year, $12 million. Think what we can do with $12 million. And people can choose where they want to send their kids, and I'm all for that, but, you know, the voucher system that we have in place now or the state has in place, you know, it's taking money away from our kids. And I get real, real pretzelled up when you start taking money from kids. But lastly, I want to say, I sit here every month and I listen to Tina as our CFO, and we got school systems across the state that boards don't know where they are financially. This person right here, I shouldn't talk about her too much because you may be getting recruiting calls, but she is, she is doing, she and her team do a fabulous job of keeping us abreast of what we need to know, and I want to say thank you from the heart, because I mean that. You keep us out of trouble, and we're not going to be like those that are really struggling right now across the state to balance budgets, so thank you.
Thank you all very much for the support.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Yes, Mr. Martin. Reverend Martin?
I'll make a quick comment for the public, because we do have control on how many kids we do have in our, in our schools. And a lot of people in our community don't understand, we offer programs, you have to send your children outside of Buncombe County or to a charter school that sits down in Raleigh or virtual down in Raleigh. We have a virtual school program here, and kids are attending school in Raleigh, they are attending virtual school in Charlotte, but we have one here. So you need to speak to your community and say, we have these programs here. Because I met a guy at the gas station, and he sent his child to a virtual school, and I said, but we have one. He said, I didn't know. And this is at Firestone. So let's get out there and promote our school system, and let's promote our community. Yes, Helene gave us a, gave us a black eye, but guess what? Black eyes heal, and we can take control of our own school system and put the kids inside of our schools to get the funding that we need. It's time for us to step up to the plate, not depend on Raleigh, and not depend on anyone else, but we can take control of it ourselves, and we can get the kids here and make an impact inside of Buncombe County itself. Buncombe County is strong. It's going to get back to where it needs to be in a couple of years and everything else. But we have the ability to add kids to programs, our early college, we have CTE program. We have all these programs available for every kid in Buncombe County to attend, but we need to promote it ourselves, and we need to be the advertisers. And I'm going to sit down with this person that works at Firestone, because I want him to go to, I want that child to go to our virtual school because it adds that ADM back to our, our system. Let's do that, and let's not worry about what's going to take place, because again, as Kim said, if I own my own company, I would rob her from Buncombe County. I hear what you're saying. I would rob this entire financial team to come in and help me manage my company, because when you have someone like this in your department and running your school system, I can put her against any other county in the state of North Carolina, even in the United States, and I don't think anyone compares to what Tina's team does. And you can leave here in confidence, we can vote on something in confidence, and understand that she has our back as a board. And if we have a question, she knows how to explain it, she knows how to tell us, and she know how to tell us when we need to back off. And I love that about her, because that's what you want in a CFO. And I have been in this world, I ain't going to tell who I am, nothing like that, but working for a major company like Home Depot, I can compare her to Carol Tumey, and she can run a multi-billion dollar company the way she thinks, because she acts exactly like our CFO at Home Depot. They know the business, they know how to get it done, but we can help her have the funds in her pocket if we just advertise our school system. That's all I got to say. I'm not going to say amen to that too much.
Okay. Thank you, Reverend Martin. Board members, yes? Mr. Cheatham?
Thank you. Ms. Thorpe, could you just clarify the amount of money that is going to charter schools from our budget?
This year, for '25-'26, there will be approximately $12 million. We have to do it monthly within 30 days of each PMR that we receive, but it will equate to right at $12 million that will be transferred to the charter schools. We have around 20 charter schools that are receiving funds each month.
Okay. And the opportunity scholarships, I believe I read it was almost 7 million?
So currently, yes, it's a little over 6 million. So currently, we have 2,169 Buncombe County schools that should be attending Buncombe County schools that are receiving opportunity scholarships that are choosing to go to private schools that these funds are going out of the major allotment for K-12 to a private school.
Could you repeat that number?
So there's 2,169 students this year, '25-'26, as of October the 6th, that's when this number was pulled, was October 6th, that are attending a private school that is receiving a voucher in place of attending Buncombe County schools. And that's going to equate to right at $13 million, because they do two payouts. They'll do one in the fall, one in the spring, and so that'll be around $13 million for the '25-'26 school year that will go to vouchers for students of Buncombe Counties.
Thank you. And could you just explain really to the public why it's such a big problem for a budget to come out with salary increases that we have not planned on? Could you just explain that?
So for a budget to come late in the year and we've not planned for salary increases or know of them in time, and with all of this transition of choice happening in kids, you can't, when kids decide to choose a different school or a different grade, it doesn't nicely come in a little package that you could eliminate one teacher because 20 students of this class went somewhere. And so you have to look at it from every grade, every point, and come up with how to best serve all the kids and meet their needs, and you can't eliminate staffing in all those situations, and then we don't have the funds coming in in a nice package of allotment based on ADM, because ADM went down, they're reducing our allotment, but we still got to have those teachers. We still got to have the support staff. We still got to have all of that to meet the needs of the students that we're still serving, and we're serving more and more higher-cost students. Others are choosing to leave, and we're serving still a high cost of EC and migrant students that other school systems are not having to serve. And so our cost is rising with less and less funding, and then salaries on top of that, we have to meet the salaries. It's legislated, so that leaves us less room, less budget, in order to meet those needs for our students.
Also, the teacher supplement is a percentage of your salary, so if the salary increases, the supplement increases?
Yes, and that's another obstacle. So within every year, we have, every faculty member receives a local supplement in Buncombe County, including the non-certified. That is a percentage, and once a salary increases, that local supplement increases. That has to be met with local dollars. In addition to that, we pay a little over 600 employees completely out of local funds, their full salary. So all of that has to be met. If a salary increase comes, we're not going to just increase just the state-paid personnel. It will be all across the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Cheatham? Anyone else?
I have one more thing, and this is not an advertisement for charter schools or private schools, but this did happen. Reverend Martin and I attended an event, and I had a parent that said to me, I have the opportunity to, or my kids go to a private school, and I get the opportunity scholarship. She said, and I think it was $8,000, wasn't it? And she said, what if I want to donate that money back? Because I had the money saved for my kids to go to those, to the school, but I don't really need the scholarship, so could I give you the scholarship money? And I said, yes, that would be Buncombe County Schools Foundation, and we are happy to take that, because honestly, so many families out there that are getting the scholarship, they don't need it financially, which is really what bothers me so much. But she did come to me and she said, you know, give me the... But she did come to me and she said, you know, give me the information. I gave her the information. So hopefully, we're going to get that money back and can use it toward kids. Again, not an advertisement for sending our kids somewhere else. But I just thought that was pretty nice of someone to think of that.
Thank you. Any other board member questions or comments? I have one final one. That, can you, in the book, you talk about the federal shutdown and that it's not expected to impact the cash flow of federal grant funds which are forward-funded. However, USDA reimbursements for school nutrition programs are not forward-funded. So it's unknown how long funds will be available. So NCDPI expects to run out of funds for October reimbursements. What is, can you, I get it, sounds worrisome. What does that actually mean from a nutrition perspective?
We're going to continue feeding our children. We're going to continue paying our staff because you know they are an enterprise. And the funds that they earn pays the salaries of their staff. So we will continue paying those as long as we can, which is using up fund balance, using up whatever it takes until we can get an answer from the state and then the federal government. Because that is a pass-through fund that's coming through. And DBI holds those funds and they have enough to go through October that they send back to us. So that's how that pass-through works. So we are waiting to hear what that will really mean in the long term. But we will continue operations to make sure their kids are fed and that our staff are paid.
So it's just that reimbursement process is what's unknown, is the big question mark, like for November, basically?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Yeah, Rental Tide School has the best salad bar and potato bar in town, so...
I hear it's making ways. I'm going to make my way out there.
Just don't, you know, just saying, it's really important. Okay, well, thanks so much again for all of the clarity and explaining all of this to us. It's incredibly helpful and again to your team, thank you for always keeping us in great financial shape.
Thank you all. Thank you for the support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, with that, board, I will ask for a motion to approve the 2025-2026 budget. I have a motion and I believe a second. All right, everybody's eager. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, 2025-2026 budget has been adopted. Moving next on to our consent agenda. We have a lengthy consent agenda to list really briefly here. We got minutes of October 2nd, 2025, open session regular. The personnel report from November 6th, 2025. Advisory council members for approval, advisory council members to add. The naming of the softball field at North Buncombe High School, which is a true honor to... I will speak about this in discussion. I feel the heat. Athletic capital outlay request, Owen High School, athletic capital outlay request from Inkham Middle School. WD Williams additions and renovations, approved change order. Community High School approved Duke Energy Utility Easement. Policies for second reading, 2302 remote participation on board meetings, 2342 voting methods, 3210 parental inspection of and objection to instructional materials, 3510 religious-based exemptions from school programs, 3620 extracurricular activities and student organizations, 4023, 7233 pregnant and parenting students and employees, 4120 domicile or residence requirements, 4240, 7312 child abuse and related threats to child safety, 4400 attendance, 4400 R attendance, 5024, 6127, 7266 emergency epinephrine delivery systems, 6125 administering medicines to students, 6340 transportation service vehicle contracts, 7100 recruitment and selection of personnel, 7310, 4040 student-staff relations, 7350, 5070 public records, retention, release and disposition, 7820 personnel files. Policy committee has been busy. Okay, I will ask, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Got a motion and I believe a second from Reverend Martin. Any discussion? I have some discussion about the naming of the North Buncombe High School softball field for Ms. Carlin Pickens. I just wanted to, for the public, to kind of learn about this exceptional person, former BCS student. So the proposal is to name the softball field at North Buncombe High School in honor of one of our most outstanding alumni, Carlin Pickens, in recognition of her historic accomplishments and her continued excellence as a student athlete. I respectfully request your approval to designate the field as KP Field. Carolyn's record at North Buncombe High School stands as one of the most impressive in our school's history. She finished her high school career with a career ERA under one, over 1,000 strikeouts and a world record-setting fastball clocked at 79.4 miles per hour. Her dedication and dominance on the mound made her a standout not only in North Carolina, but on the national stage. Carlin has since taken her talents to the University of Tennessee where she has continued to shine. In her freshman year, she was named to the SEC All-Freshmen Team and went on to earn the title of SEC Freshman of the Year. Most notably, in the 2023, she played a pivotal role in helping lead the Lady Volunteers to the Women's College World Series. Carlin exemplifies the values of hard work, humility, perseverance and excellence qualities we strive to instill in all of our students. Naming the field KP Field not only honors her legacy, but also serves to inspire current and future Blackhawk student athletes to pursue their dreams with the same passion and commitment. I love it. Yes, ma'am.
I believe you just stole my thunder and I would, but I really appreciate the fact that you have enumerated the characteristics of Carlin Pickens, who is a student at North Buncombe High School. And perhaps you should let me do it next time. Thank you.
Does she know this yet?
Yes.
She does?
Yes.
Because I know she's going to have a camp, I'm advertising for her.
We'd be glad for any participant to come play with Carlin Pickens. Who's a North Buncombe student and we're...
We got you, we got you, Ms. Franklin.
Let me just say, this North Buncombe person would have done that had she been given the opportunity.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had discussion. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Moving on to announcements and future meetings. The next regular Board of Education meeting is December the 11th, 2025 at 5:30 p.m. in the Menatorium. Work session updates and closed session begin at 4 p.m. in the Executive Conference Room here at 175 Bingham Road, Asheville, North Carolina. That, I'll make a motion or entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? None, the meeting is adjourned.